Call to meeting in order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Selaya.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Montano.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If we'd all please rise to the invocation. Councilwoman Woolridge will be giving it tonight. The Pledge of Allegiance in his next to last meeting will be led by Councilmember Selaya.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy and for your grace. We thank you for protecting our town. We thank you, Father, that you will endow us with wisdom and knowledge to do those things that are best for all people. And just, Father, just be with us as we have this meeting tonight. Let us understand and to come to decisions that will benefit all the citizens of the town of Florence and surrounding communities. I should bless all those who are sick and those who are bereaved everywhere, but especially in our community. We thank you for all things in your Son Jesus' name.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance.
... United States of America, and history will live where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every heath and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the call to the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the Town Council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. In the back there are sign up slips. I've received two. And I can remind you that there is three minutes. And Mickey, I can't read your writing. I'm sorry. If you would come up to the podium, please, or out there to the microphone in the middle, I appreciate it. Is it McGraw?
McGraw.
Thank you.
I'm just inquiring if there is any discussion in the future about any adjustment to the minimum billing from the Water Department for seasonal residents with zero usage.
Could you pull the microphone closer to you?
Go ahead and repeat it, but pull the microphone to you and speak into the microphone because we're going out on the airwaves.
Inquiring as if there were any discussion or any adjustments in the future about the minimum billing for the Water Department for seasonal residents that have zero usage for a number of months.
There's been discussion in the past, but this is not an agenda item that we can discuss tonight. I will advise you to get a hold of our town manager, or we have your contact information. This is the telephone number we can get a hold of you at.
That is correct.
I'll give it to him, and he'll be able to contact you this week.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, and our honorable town staff, I'd like to, my name is Donald Woolridge, pastor of Union Baptist Church, I'd like to capture this moment to commend and thank the voting citizens of our town for not allowing themselves to be turned off by the sinister and political rhetoric, and chose rather to reelect my wife Valerie to serve a fourth term on Florence's Town Council. Given the moral decay of antiquated and outdated and the stone age ideals, coupled with the dark principles of self-interest and the political motivation of others, you who voted for my wife, you made the right choice. And I just want to share that I know that Valerie will continue to wholeheartedly serve you. Her faith in God is the center in which all lines meet. Her footing in all decisions needed to be made. And I would just like to close by saying that since the dedication of the library and the Aquatic Center, I've had the privilege to speak with many of our young people in this community. And I want to guarantee you that there's a hope in them that I've never noticed before. They are just so glad that the future holds a brightness for them. They'll be able to come out of that box that they've been held back and held in for so long. I commend you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the audience that'd like to speak, even though he didn't fill out a card? Seeing none, I'll close. Call to the public.
Item six, Public Hearings and Presentations. Item six A, Public Hearing on Resolution Number 145-14, and for discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving a conditional use permit to allow for public utility buildings, structures, and facilities for public service uses on neighborhood multifamily R2-zone property located at 3949 North Iowa Avenue, Florence, Arizona, AKA APN 200-71-2400, case PZC 29-14 CUP. Mr. Ogier will be giving you a presentation before the public hearing this evening.
Mayor, Town Council, good evening. In front of you, you'll see a map. It shows the location of the subject site tonight. This location is kind of in the middle of Vista Hermosa. The area in question tonight is actually identified as Vista Hermosa Track B. This case is for a conditional use permit, as mentioned by Mr. Garcia. A little background information, Vista Hermosa is a retirement community in the northwest portion of Florence, and is adjacent to Highway 79, Penale Parkway. It's kind of in the middle of retirement communities, and also partly surrounded by state land to the north, Florence Military Reservation to the east, and Florence Gardens Community to the south. There's about 103 condominium-style homes that exist around the town's parcel, as I said, Vista Hermosa Track B. This is the replat of the site, and it's in red, the site we're talking about. The subject site is about one and a half acres in size and has been utilized by the Town of Florence for infrastructure for several decades. The area is zoned as neighborhood multifamily R2 zoning district. For several years, the town has housed the water tank, police wireless communication tower, and other public infrastructure equipment in the area to provide services to the Florence Gardens area, including Vista Hermosa. The area in red is owned by the Town of Florence. Years ago, the town-owned parcel was traded to Vista Hermosa to obtain the one and a half acre site. The land trade helped clear up some of the parcel boundary issues and ownership issues. The decision accompanied by the replating of Vista Hermosa within the Florence Gardens area happened June 6, 2009. The replat clearly defines the town property and the Vista Hermosa HOA property. When we do a conditional use permit, the street fundings have to be established. The first one is that the site is currently zoned neighborhood multifamily R2, and per the town code, it is allowed to have a public utility building structure for public service uses on this site with a conditional use permit. Staff also contends that the new proposed water tank will be smaller than the existing one that's on the site. The new tank will accommodate 600,000 gallons of potable water that will be used to continue adequate water services to the residents of this community. Additional town equipment is already in use on the site, and it includes the wireless communication tower and the existing tank. This image here shows you the existing tank right here in the center. There's also some other additional equipment that's already on the site, some also off the site over here on this corner here. The area is surrounded by neighborhood multifamily zoned areas to the south, the west, also on the site. To the east, we have MHS, which is manufactured home subdivision, and to the north is another neighborhood multifamily R2 zone property. The last finding, we found that there is vehicular access to the site that is provided by a privately owned maintained road, Iowa Avenue. The town has been granted permission to use this access point by a blanket easement which was approved by Town Council, June 6, 2009. Any of the report, it states what the blanket easement states. We also note that only one access point is necessary to accommodate the town going to the site to provide any maintenance that may be needed to the site. We are looking at other possibilities as this area grows as far as more access points, but as of now, only access point is up at Iowa. We would also contend that we find no potential compatibility issues with having this conditional use permit in place. As mentioned before, the tank has been in place for quite some time, and we have other equipment that's on the site. We have been following public participation process, and we have been speaking with the HOA currently to ensure that there's no issues, and to explain to them what's been going on, and also talking about the new, or potentially the new water tank that's going to go in the site. The fiscal impact for this project has been identified as $2,600,000 is what is predicted the cost for this project. I'm sorry, I got that backwards. It's $2,400,000, but they have budgeted up to $2,600,000 for this project. We found that the application for the conditional use permit that the town has requested is appropriate for the site, and we did get a unanimous recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission. If you have any questions, tonight I have a company that's going to be building the tank here to answer any questions, or we also have John Mitchell with the utility side of the town.
Before I open the public hearing, does any member of the council have any questions?
This is by the, where there used to be an in-ground concrete water tank, or maybe it was a pool at one time or something, ended up on that hill.
Mayor, Council, I believe the area that you're talking about is a little further to the north. It's not on this site now. I believe it's up here somewhere. I've been to the site, and it's not the same location.
Any other questions?
Thought there was a, isn't there a tower there and stuff?
Mayor Rankin and Councilman Hawkins, if I could interject, there was an in-ground, underground reservoir at one point in time that was filled up. The concrete was demolished, and it was filled up immediately to the east of the existing water tank.
Yeah, we did that several years ago, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Anything else, ma'am?
No, that's it.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Any member of the public have anything they'd like to comment on this? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I've got a couple of questions on it. You said that you've had contact with the Homeowners Association up there. What are the major concerns raised?
Mayor, Council, they had questions on the location of the new tank, the amount of water that it could hold, potable water, also improvements to the site. I didn't mention it, it is in your report, but I believe it's on page, it'll be on page four. We mentioned some of the items that are going to accompany the new water tank. For example, the CMU wall that's going to enclose the entire tank, security fencing that's going to be placed inside of the fence. It'll be inside the fence, so you can't view it from any of the roads, or even from the site. Also, a roll gate opening for vehicular access. Also, all weather access roads that we're going to request to be placed inside in case emergency vehicles need to go inside the site. And that pretty much concludes the...
And what are we going to do with the old tank?
I believe John is here tonight, he could answer that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, John Mitchell. That tank will remain in service.
So, how much water will we be storing up on top of that hill now?
It will be, well, the new tank is 600,000. I think it's a 1 million gallon tank adjacent to it, 1.6 million gallons.
Thank you. Any other questions, members of the staff? Hearing none, you need a motion? Wait a minute, I closed the, I closed the public hearing, did I? Okay, now I need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1485-14, North Florence Tank Site, PZC 2914 C.
Second? We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1485-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item six B, Presentation by the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce Recognizing the River Bottom Grill as the Business of the Month.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce recognizes the River Bottom Grill as the Business of the Month for November with their community service, their support for the Florence Chamber of Commerce, and most recently the ALS ice bucket, well, dunk tank bucket challenge this past month, which I heard the mayor and chief use had a nice line going out to Highway 79. So, in representing for the River Bottom Grill is Sean Gibson. So, we recognize the River Bottom Grill as Business of the Month for November.
Thank you. Right, Sean.
Thank you. On behalf of the River Bottom Grill, I want to say thank you for recognizing them as Business of the Month. They are greatly appreciated and are delighted to receive this award. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seven, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the item is called. Item A, Authorization to Enter Into an Agreement Number 2014-03 Regarding Reimbursement Overtime and Overtime Employee-Related Expenses Incurred Due to the Florence Police Department's Participation in the Penale County Narcotics Task Force, Arizona Criminal Justice Commission Grant Number DC15-010. Item B, Authorization to Purchase Muscat's Light Structure Green System from Muscat Sport Lighting LLC in Amount Not to Exceed $94,569 for the Heritage Park Ball Field Lighting Project. Item C, Authorization to Enter Into a Contract with Spectra Electrical Services for Installation of Sport Lighting Equipment in an Amount Not to Exceed $48,553 for Heritage Park Ball Field Lighting Project. Item D, Authorization to Award a Contract to Overton Builders for Tenant Improvements to 244 West 20th Street Office Building in an Amount Not to Exceed $74,950. Acceptance of Funds, Item E, sorry, Acceptance of Funds from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation in the Amount of $12,588.80 to Purchase Emergency Rescue Equipment. Item F, Authorization to Approve and Execute the Street Pole Use License, Streetlight Energy and Streetlight Maintenance Agreement with Arizona Public Service. Item G, Approval of a Special Event Liquor License for Caliente-Cassidel Soul for Their Annual New Year's Eve Dance on December 31, 2014, from 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Item H, Approval of Awarding a Contract to AME Electrical Contracting, Inc., in Amount Not to Exceed $25,955. Item I, Approval of the October 6 and October 20, 2014 Town Council Minutes, and to Receive and file the following Board and Commission Minutes. The August 27, 2014 Historic District Advisory Commission Minutes, the September 17, 2014 Joint Use Library Advisory Board Minutes, the March 25, April 24, June 10 joint meeting with Library Advisory Board, and July 24, 2014 Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Minutes. Mayor, members of council, that is your consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Does anybody on the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Any others? Does any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of Item F.
We have a motion and a second to approve this consent agenda with the exception of Item F. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item F.
Item F. Does this include the old street lights we have?
Mayor Rankin, Vice Mayor Smith, no, it only includes basically the APS-owned lights, the old street lights that I think you're referring to, the antique lights, are owned by the town, they're not owned by APS.
Because I do know that the two in Area Square haven't worked for a year. Those two lights need to be worked on.
The antique lights, we'll check them out.
I think it's a light switch because it continues all the way down past the post office. So, I think it's just turned off.
That could...
No, one is broken up top totally, so, but the other one isn't working, so I'm not too sure on that.
We'll check them out.
Or they're old, just like this. In that case, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to accept Item F.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Item F. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item eight, New Business. Item eight A, Canvas of the 2014 General Election and Discussion Approval, Disapproval of a Resolution Number 1487-14, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, declaring and adopting the results of the general election held on November 4, 2014. Mayor, members of council, as you're aware, we held an election, and this election had the best voter turnout that we have ever had. We did have 56.66% of the public voting in this election. Let's go through our statistical information really quickly. We did have 2,436 ballots cast. The number of votes that were cast through the mail were 1,821. That means of the people voting, 74.75% voted by mail in the election. We did have 1,830 ballots that needed to be verified, and of those, nine were ineligible. The number of votes received for each candidate is as followed. John Anderson received 1,132 votes. Arthur Buckley received 920 votes. Lyle Gilbertson received 940 votes. And Valerie Woolridge received 1,016 votes. This means that John, Lee Anderson, and Valerie Woolridge were the highest vote-getters. The Town of Florence will hold its ceremonial meeting on December 1. We will say goodbye to our council members who are leaving us on that day, as well as swear in our newly elected council members, and we would like to invite the entire public to come out to that ceremonial meeting. With that, you have canvassed the elections. You can adopt the resolution. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, Lisa? Hearing none, I just kind of asked John and Valerie, do you really want it? And congratulations, I will say that from the bottom of my heart, all the council, we wish you well in your endeavor. Valerie, continue on. John, welcome aboard. Becky sheet back there in the back. We already did yours one time before, Beck, but two of the council members, and a little bit later, you guys get an opportunity to talk too. Okay? Need a motion?
Make a motion to accept Resolution Number 1487-14, 2014 General Election Results.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1487-14. Any other discussion?
No, excuse me.
Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations again. Next meeting, the 1st of December, the meeting will be the 1st of December. You'll be sworn in then. Okay?
Item eight B, Discussion Approval, Disapproval of Issuing a Notice of Award and Entering Into a Contract with Apache Underground and Excavation for the Bailey Street and 12th Street Water Line Improvement Project in Amount Not to Exceed $479,334. Mr. Mitchell will be presenting to you tonight.
John?
Mayor, members of the council, this in fact is the Bailey Street and 12th Street Water Line Project. This is one of your CIP projects. We had nine companies bidding this particular project. The lowest responsive bidder was Apache Excavation, Underground and Excavation, for an amount of approximately $479,334. The duration of this project upon start of construction is about 90 days. And so, we hope to get in quickly and get out within approximately 90 days of start of construction. The contractor submitted a schedule. He was a little optimistic. He's looking to start the first part of December. But this notice of award that's issued this evening, it starts the clock. He has 10 days to execute the contract, return it to the town for our signature, so it'll probably be the first part of January or so that he actually begins construction. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I've also invited Ricky Holston from Sunshine Sunrise Engineering to, he was our engineer of record, should there be any technical questions on the project.
Tommy? What kind of challenges do you see on Penale there? Is that going to affect the county campus in any way, or?
No, sir. We've pretty well mapped out all of the hindrances along the way, and I don't anticipate any problem. It's straightforward. The one challenge we do have is the new concrete structure at crosswalks on Main and at 12th. We have to bore under that concrete. I will not, I'm not going to dig up Main Street and redo that. So, that's probably about the only challenge that we face. The other important consideration of this project is it'll allow us to parallel the water line project that you installed a few years back west of Main Street where we had need for fire hydrants. Basically, this is another one of those projects that we will try to upgrade the downtown system at least to the west of Penale Parkway, and the installation of new hydrants to better serve the areas in that area.
Yeah, Wayne probably knows as much about this as anybody does, but February 14 is home tour. There should be five buildings on Bailey Street that'll be open to the public. We also have at the Main Square down by 10, by the 8th Street. That's where everything assembles for selling tickets and where the buses, the carriages are supposed to come. Are we going to be okay to move on Bailey Street?
I believe that is the case. We'll have to, and it was brought to my attention, that the home tour is the 14th, which falls pretty much right in the middle of this schedule. We just have to ensure that there's no open trenches, that whatever is uncovered and pipes replaced is put back into usable condition. At the end of the day, there will be some disruption, but I don't envision the contractor opening up the whole extent of Bailey Street just to put in the water line, so it'll be sequential. But because of the home tour, it's going to be very important that we sit down with the... the contractor, make sure that he understands the importance of the home tour, and works that into his schedule.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, need a motion?
Make a motion to approve issuing a notice of award and entering into a contract with Apache Underground and Excavation for the Bailey Street and 12th Street Waterline Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $479,334.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Apache Underground and Excavation for the Bailey Street Project, and 12th Street, I guess, Waterline Improvement Project, not in an amount not to exceed $479,334. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, John.
Item C, resolution number 1488-14, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, granting approval to the issuance of one or more series of the Industrial Development Authority of the Town of Florence, Inc., tax-exempt and taxable education revenue bonds, Excel refund funding project, series 2014, in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $3 million to refund the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Phoenix, 501(c)(3) Revenue Bonds Excel Project, series 2009. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Viaverdi to come and speak on behalf of the project.
Peter?
Mayor and Council, good evening. This afternoon, the Industrial Development Authority met at the Suter House, and there was a quorum of the IDA. The representative was our bond counsel, Bill Wilder and John Frye, and also for the Excel program, Connie Laird, executive director, and Ray Ann Brevig, CFO and Vice President Finance, and of course, Roxanne Gallagher with Saxon Charon, bond counsel. Also present were Virginia Wellness Program, DeeDee Devine, CEO, Native American Connections, and Joe Kiefer, Director of Real Estate Development, and again, Roxanne Eschneider as bond counsel. Both bondings were approved and being submitted to you for final approval. The first one is simply, well, I shouldn't say simply, but the first one is a, Excel is a refunding project, and you, I mean, Connie Laird, if you have any questions, we'd be willing to answer any questions you have on that. Connie? As I said, both the bondings were approved.
Good evening, Council members and mayor.
Good evening.
Be happy to answer any questions, if you have any for me about Excel.
I don't, I kind of like this idea. I think it's a good idea. The thing I would like to know from Peter is, did the IDA approve it?
Yes, I thought I said that at the beginning.
I didn't hear that.
Yes.
Okay. I think it's a good idea, getting back into the bond with the IDA.
Thank you.
I don't hear any questions. You can go ahead and sit down. Okay.
And then the second one.
Peter, let's do this resolution first. We need a motion?
Make a motion to approve and adopt resolution number 1488-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 1488-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, resolution number 1489-14, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, granting approval to the issuance of one or more series of the Industrial Development Authority of the Town of Florence, Inc., tax-exempt and/or taxable revenue bonds, Virginia Wellness Project, series 2014, in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $5 million to finance acquisition, construction, and equipping of a healthcare facilities for Virginia Wellness, Inc., LLC. Mr. Viaverdi will address the council.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On resolution number 1489-14, the IDA did approve and passed the motion for bonding. This, the Virginia Wellness Program is actually a physical, a construction equipment, equipping of healthcare acquisition and construction. With that is Virginia, excuse me, is DeeDee Devine, CEO of Native American Connections, and Joe Kiefer, and of course, Roxanne Gallagher from Saxon Charon as bond counsel. I think that, if you have any questions, that DeeDee Devine will make any, answer any questions you may have.
Any member of the council have any questions? Just in your next adventure, remember Florence, we can use some healthcare down here, too.
We said the same thing, and we asked all the Avery questions. We have some property, and they will surely come down, so we can find some property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, hearing no other questions, I need a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 1489-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 1489-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, staff, would it request a fifteen-minute break to be able to set the room up for a work session?
Folks, we're going to go into a fifteen-minute break right now before we go into the work session on the state imposed expenditure limitation. And that's the main reason we're doing this, is so we can rearrange the desk around here, so we're all facing you, so you can look at us, we don't have our backs to you and everything as we come down. And Becky and John, I'd appreciate it if you guys would be here, sitting with the council. Even though you're not seated, your input might be valuable to us to make a decision since you'll be one of, or two of the people that'll be voting on it. In next month, or next meeting?
We will have a public hearing on December 1st. We will be having a public hearing on December 15th, and voting on it on December 15th.
Okay. So if you stick around, folks, we are in recess for fifteen, twenty minutes. Thank you.
Item nine, work session on state imposed expenditure limitation and special election in May of 2015. Mike Farina will start this, and he will discuss the state imposed expenditure limitation, and then I will follow up with information on the election, and the call of an election, and how council wants to perform the election, whether it's going to be ground or mail. Mike?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Council-elect. So tonight is a second work session on the state imposed limitation. And just a quick refresher on it, the town did not pass, the voters did not pass, the home rule election back in August, so now the town will be subject to the state imposed limitation for the fiscal year 2015-16, and then also 2016-17 fiscal year budgets. Just a reminder, I passed out, right before the meeting started, I just passed out the presentation from October 6th, and if you could turn to page, or slide 13, I'm going to refer to some numbers on there. All right, so with the failure of the home rule election, the town is now subject to the state imposed limitation, and the estimated limitation for the 2015-16 budget is $17,505,500. And that, again, that's just an estimate, the final numbers don't come in until around February, and then another number in April. And then again, with the annexation, we might not know that number until July, whether, if that challenge is unsuccessful. So also on this, on page, on slide 13, you see the budget reduction in amount, and for without annexation, you might remember, I mentioned a $12.8 million number of having to reduce the budget to get to the state imposed limitation, using the figures from the 2014-15 budget as a base, as a base number, and then the CIP numbers that are in the approved CIP 2015 through 19. So you can see the reduction with, in the column, without annexation being $12,834,700, and that's made up of mostly capital projects, and $2 million contingency line, and then a remainder of, and if you flip the page to slide 14, if the capital projects were to be eliminated, and the contingency funding were to be eliminated, that would leave a remainder of 2.8 million, or a little over 2.8 million of operating or recurring cost to be reduced out of the budget, using, again, the 2014-15 budget as a baseline. So what the state constitution allows, though, is an election asking the voters for authorization to exceed the state imposed limitation by a specific amount. It gives the, that would give the control back, and ability back to the town, to set its own budget based on the needs that it knows it has, rather than being controlled by the state. So this is the kicking off those steps to get to that election. If you remember, at the October 6th work session, we had recommended doing this specific amount, exceeding the expenditure limitation election, and that election is, has to be held the third Tuesday in May. So what we did in preparation for tonight's meeting was to determine that specific amount, and we looked at the 14-15 budget, the base budget, and taking into account unavoidable inflation, or cost increases due to inflation, also the CIP that is in the 2015, 2019 CIP capital projects, and also maintaining current, the current level of service, and then just including those additional inflationary costs that are unavoidable, or other inflationary costs. And we determined an amount to be about $15 million to add, to ask the voters if we can exceed the state imposed limitation by. So that would be about, take the state imposed limitation, $17 million, and then plus the $15 million, that would be our budget. But the way the question is going to read, and we got an example from another city that had done the same sort of question, it asks for a specific amount, and then so that the budget is no greater than what was the budget adopted for 2014-15. So just, for example, the 2014-15 budget was $66 million, over $66 million, about $66.8 million. And with that, I also wanted to add that this question that we're going to be asking also, just you need to know, and the public would need to know, that it's not a tax increase, and it also will not affect revenues, increase, decrease, whether the election succeeds or fails. And with that, that's the, pretty much the way the election question would go, and with that, I'll turn it over, or I'll ask, see if there's any questions.
Any member of the council, or future members of the council, have any question? Mike? Okay, Lisa?
Okay, so as Mike said, that if council chooses to have an election, we have to have that election in the third Tuesday in May. And I put together for you an election calendar, so you can see. The calendar shows the last dates that are allowed by law, not the first, not the suggested dates. So as you will see, that there are two public hearings that are required to be held if council is going to put this special election on. Those public hearings have to be done prior to your call of an election. And underneath this particular requirement for this election, they have to also have a notification published in the paper that states not only the count, how council voted for the election, but what the purpose is. So we need to get that in the paper prior to our call on January 5th of the election. So we're looking at our deadlines for making sure that we hit all of our marks coming up immediately with this executive session. Last week, I already got the notices out to the paper, to be able to say we're having the public hearings. If council chooses not to do this, I would have to cancel them, because they are out in the public. So what we have to decide at this time is, if we're going to move forward with an election in May, what type of election does council want to have? You have a choice. I called the county reporters. You can have a ground election, or you can have a mail election. What I need to know is, I need to know how council feels about it, so that when I'm drafting the IGA for election services, that we can move forward in the correct manner. County did give me both quotes for a ground election and for a mail ballot election. The ground election estimate is $20,012.36, and the mail ballot election is $12,935.68. So it is cheaper to go with the mail ballot election, but I'm going to tell you one reason why I personally like the mail ballot election, which I know most of you already know, is because it gets out the vote, it gives everybody the ability to vote at home, but it also puts the responsibility on staff to get out into the public and make sure we do a really good job educating the public. If you look at our calendar that we presented to you, the items in yellow, those are the items that are mandatory dates that are required. The items in pink, those are already our public speaking engagements, that we've already calendared. And we've got about seven more to add. And so we are really going to go out to the public and try to educate, and educate them on what it means to be able to have this special election. And we'll also be asking council members to go out with us, and hope we get a lot of support, and many members of council showing their support for the staff doing the education. Yes, sir?
Ruben, hit your button there, and make it go green.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, my question that I had is, in looking at the general election that we just had, the majority of the voters, if I remember correctly, was nearly seventy percent that voted by mail?
Seventy-seven percent voted by mail, yes, sir.
Okay, I like the mail-in ballots better, because we get a better turnout for voters that way.
Yes, sir. Yes, if council, if council agrees, we can move forward and notify the county, so they know what to do. And we're not going to vote on it tonight, it'll actually be a vote when I bring that intergovernmental agreement back to council, saying that, one, we're going to have an election. So general consensus is of the council, we are having an election, correct? And then we are going to do it by mail, and I will prepare all those documents and bring it back. But while we're here tonight, I do want to go over the items that are going to be used for the public. And these are going to be what we're going to have a public hearing on. And verbiage is very important during an election, so I want to go over the resolution with you. The resolution title is, it's a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Florence, Arizona, proposing a one-time specific amount in excess of the state imposed expenditure limitation, and setting forth a special election for May 19th, 2015. Then it gets into the whereas's. The whereas's explain why we are having this election. So it goes over, and it says basically that the Arizona state constitution permits the submittal to the voters, a one-time specific amount in excess of the town's expenditure limitation, under Article 9, Section 222(c), and then it says, whereas the voters of Florence in '82, '86, '90, '94, '98, and 2002, 2006, and 2010 authorized an expenditure limitation. It says, the town's current local alternative expenditure limitation expires at the end of fiscal year 2014-15. We go on to say that the town voters did not approve the alternative expenditure limitation presented in fiscal year 2015-16 through 2018-19. Therefore, a ballot measure requesting authorization to exceed the state imposed expenditure limitation must be presented to the voters for fiscal year 2015-16. And then we've said that Town Council, after holding two public hearings, had determined that the one-time specific amount is necessary for the Town of Florence to regain local control. And then it goes, now therefore be it resolved. And then that's where it talks about what the authorization is. You're giving me authorization to enter into a contract with the, an IGA with Pinal County for Election Services, and that the following question will be submitted to the qualified voters for a special election to be held on May 19th. Shall the Town of Florence regain local control and exceed the state imposed expenditure limitation for fiscal year 2014-15? limitation for fiscal year 2015-2016 by 15 million dollars to allow the town to adopt a budget no greater than the amount that was adopted in fiscal year 2014-2015? That is the question that's going to be on the ballot. That is the way staff is recommending that we educate the citizens on how this ballot and how this election goes. Now, therefore be it resolved, this is very, very important because a lot of people will think that 15 million dollars, that's a lot of money. But if you read this statute right here, it says that immediately after the election, the council has to adopt the ordinance setting, the towns, you know, every year we adopt the ordinance that sets the expenditure limitation, that's part of your budgetary process where you go in and you say the town of Florence is not going to expend more than this amount. So it's the state shared limitation amount not to exceed what the state is. We can spend 15 million dollars over that, the council still controls it because you have to go back in, you have to set a budget, plus you have to go back in and set the ordinance that will set the expenditure limitation immediately following the canvas of the election and the adoption if it passes. Does that make sense? Okay, that's very, very important. If we move on, so that will, this will be resolution after we have our two public meetings, will have to be voted on and five members of council will have to vote in favor of this to be able to have this election. Once that occurs, we have to publish it in the paper with a certificate of publication and a little paragraph stating the purpose. The rest of the information that we've given you, a town of Florence has to go out and we have to submit a publicity pamphlet. So we're already showing you what we intend on submitting in our publicity pamphlet. These are the documents that you have before you. Would like you to read them, make sure that you think this is the way that we should be approaching our voters. And this is the exact documents that we are looking at presenting, the proposition for the ballot. A yes vote means, it states simply, "A yes vote shall have the effect of continuing existing service by regaining local control of the expenditures and existing revenues of Florence residents. A no vote shall have the effect of preventing the local control of expenditures by Florence residents and will require expenditures instead to be limited by the state imposed expenditure formula based on fiscal year 1979-1980 expenditures resulting in cuts in existing town services and programs." I just provided you a public hearing notice showing that prior to this meeting, we were required to advertise and we have advertised it. So you're going to see it in the upcoming paper notifying the public. Jess is currently writing a press release, making sure that we're not only inviting them to our ceremonial meeting that we're having, but we're also inviting them to listen to and hear the information on our election material. Finally, we have an invitation for people to submit an argument in favor of or against. This is a requirement for this election. People have the right to form committees. We have been approached for people who want to get together and put in their packets. We'll have those packets available for political action committees starting next week. Arguments can be 300 words and they are $200 to be able to file an argument. In this particular instance, and this is the only instance that I know about, usually a city may not expend money to promote an election. In this particular case, the town council is required to write an argument in favor of. So staff will start working on that and we will present that to you to see how you feel about the argument that we draft for you. Any individual members of council that want to write their own argument, I do have to charge you $200, just like I would have to charge anyone else. I'm just going to say it right now. You want to file an argument for or against, I'd be happy to accept your argument. It can be 300 words, but I will charge you $200. And that's basically my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have one question. When you mentioned Pinell County and the cost of the elections?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that take into consideration if the annexations go through or if the annexations do not go through? Will that, will that affect any of the pricing that they gave us?
It will affect the pricing and I have not taken that into consideration. I would have to address it though, I would have to adjust it based on both. It would adjust up based on either way because there'd be more sent out. I would have to go in and do an analysis based on how many people would be voting by mail on the ground election to incur those costs. And they would be inviting them to a poll, so there would be no polling site cost. That would increase.
Okay. And also, is that notice of the election going to extend into their area as well, just to err on the side of caution if the annexation does go through? That way the due diligence was followed?
A notice of elections are only required to be, we do old school notices of elections. We do the resolution being adopted by council, we notify the public, plus we advertise it in the paper. It's only required to be advertised in the paper.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
All right, Jim, let me ask you a question. What is the, what do you anticipate to schedule on the resolution of the lawsuit on the annexation? Any kind of idea?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and our newly elected officials. I filed a request to the Superior Court Judge that's handling the matter to set a scheduling conference so that we can get on our way towards the resolution. I have not heard from the court yet on that. There was no opposition to it filed by the people that are contesting the annexation, so I don't see any reason why we shouldn't hear from the court soon. But I have not actually heard from the court as to the date for the scheduling conference. My hope is that that will take place soon and that that will provide me with an opportunity to express to the court the overriding importance of finality in getting a decision from the From other cases that I've looked at, I've seen that they, they, some of them have taken upwards of six months. But remember, we've already, the case has already been on file with the court for quite a while, so I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll have a schedule set and we'll be able to get into court, present our arguments and get a ruling within the next couple of months, I'm hopeful. But I don't really have a hard and firm date for you.
The ruling would have to occur prior to April 20th to be able to have anybody, be able to be added to our voting rolls because voter registration does close on April 20th for this particular election.
And then the reason for the second meeting in December, which we usually do away with, is because it coincides with the election's calendar schedule that you have to have in place.
Yeah, the last day to call the election is actually January 5th. So in order to make that happen and have two, we wanted to have our two public hearings and because it requires our results to be published in the paper, we actually wanted to have two public hearings. So we'll have that on December 1st, December 15th, and in the week of December 22nd, we will publish those in the paper. And then afterwards, we'll have council officially call the election on January 5th.
I guess, you know, I think it's something that needs to be done. It's something that I don't think we did a good job on the first time and I ain't got the only reason we lost it. I'm in favor of going ahead with it even though we can't vote on it here tonight. We'll be doing that on the, on the 4th or the?
On the 1st, we'll be having a public hearing and we will be presenting the materials that are here in your document, the resolution. We'll be modifying the RCA slightly, just using the mic's portion basically of the RCA tonight and presenting the resolution to council. We'll have the second public hearing on December 15th and we will be voting on it in a special meeting on December 15th. We'll have to adjourn out of our meeting after the public hearing. We will call a special meeting and council will vote on it. It takes two-thirds of council to vote on it in order to be on a ballot and then it will be, we will send it over to the paper to publish it. And then on the 5th, we will call our election. Because staff would like to do the mail ballot election, if you look at your calendar, what you will notice is March and April are going to be the months that we're going to be asking you to attend meetings with us. The 30 days prior to ballots being mailed are the dates that we're going to be looking at really getting out of the community and making sure that hopefully we talk to every person that we can possibly talk to to educate them. Staff is not allowed to ask anyone to vote in favor of or against anything. We're just allowed to go out and educate and say, what does it actually mean to vote in favor of and what does it actually mean to vote against? And that's what we will be doing.
So staff's, staff's position will be to educate the public on what we, what we're proposing?
That's correct.
It'll be up to us as council members, if we elect this, to go out and then we can ask after the educational process, is ask the public to support us as a, as elected council person. We can do that.
Yes, as long as you're not spending any money for, on the towns while you're out there, that's great. If you go out into the public and talk to people about it, you are allowed to do that.
But at the educational meetings, after the educational portion?
Oh, after staff has done, that's fine.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions about it? Any others that need to be answered? John?
Hit the green, yeah. There you go.
There you go, okay. Yeah, I have a question about the, I guess some of the publicity that we're going to be dealing with. Are we going to be able to tell people specifically what they'll be giving up for the 12 million or the 2 million, either way?
If you, if you look at our public education portion starts, the first day we have it going is on, I'm going blind, guys, on March 9th. And so what you'll be doing is you'll be working with your staff. Finance director will be coming to you with a budget and you're going to be working through your budget process like we always do. And you're going to have to have one budget that's going to say, how is life going to be in Florence without the voters approving this item? And then you're going to have to be looking at what does Florence life look like if the voters do approve this? So you're going to have two separate budgets that staff is going to have to develop for you. And we typically, usually it's about April, May, and June before we have our budgets done. Obviously, we're going to be working on a shortened calendar and we're going to be coming to you because we are going to have these public meetings and we're going to have to be going and making statements about how these budgets are going to look.
John, in response a little bit to your question, I think that by that time, staff should have an idea. They won't know for sure. You know, it won't be, police won't be fired, won't be Public Works or Recreation. They should have an idea of what's going on that if you wanted to have something in the pamphlet, that there should be enough information at that time to, in the direction that we were headed.
Well, I think we, you know, we need to be able to, to give some people, some kind of general idea of what is, what this is going to cost them one way or the other. You vote for it, you're going to get this. If you don't vote for it, you're going to lose certain services or, or.
Well, I think, I think a part of it.
Or whatever, you know?
You're right. And I think one of the things I'm looking at for the next couple of years we're going along is now that we've set some things in process here in the old part of town, I think that we need to take, be looking at maybe working more towards, I know we have an economic development director, but I take a look at other communities and what they've done as far as infrastructure work and putting in for economic centers or industrial parks or whatever, work centers. I think it's time that, that the council, directing our staff, if we have the rest, revenues available, to start implementing some of these so we can maybe drag in some, you know, I don't know what we're going to get, but trying to really this next two years go up for a big push.
Well, if we don't start, we'll never get there.
That's, well, that's true.
Mayor, council by May. Now, first of all, you know, the, I think the work ahead of us is pretty intense because it's actually going to be three budgets. It depends on when we know what happens with the annexations. That'd be one. The other two is with or without it. So potentially turn it into six budgets. It just depends how that works. Now, what I, what I'd like to do, and I do honestly appreciate the mayor and council's support and my indulgence over the last two years trying to dig in and learn a budget from scratch that I didn't know. And I would ask though, at this time, mayor, council, I mean, mayor, I think it's important to go back to that budget committee at this point in time, recognizing that staff has a ton of work during the daytime and get some assistance from someone you appoint from council to work with staff. I think that's important. I think we need to start going there because we're going to be spending a lot of time doing this.
I've, I don't know if we can appoint anybody at this time, but.
On December 1st, when you do your appointments, I will add it to the list.
Okay, at this point, I've, I'm looking at Valerie and Becky being on the committee unless somebody else has any other objections that need to talk to me about it and we'll go from there.
I will add it to the list and you can make your appointments. We have 11 or 12 appointments to make on that first meeting.
Yeah, like I said, at this time, that's where I'm looking at right now. Tara?
I do have a question. In looking at March 9th, starting that budgetary process, when will the early ballots be mailed out?
If you look on my.
It's online, I didn't have a hard copy.
Sorry, sorry, hold on. Early ballots will be ready to be distributed on April 16th. Now, I need to talk to you about a little catch 22 here. The law states that that's the first day that you're, can mail your ballots. But it's going to be my recommendation to the printer that we hold our ballots. The reason why I'm going to request that we hold our ballots is because the state law for this particular type of election says that we have to wait until 30 days prior to the election to be able to receive arguments. So I've got to keep that notification open for receiving arguments. As the arguments for or against come in, I'm going to be getting them over and getting them translated into Spanish, that's a requirement. I'm going to be sending them over to the printer so that they can be typed at. But I have to wait until that final day before we can print our publicity ballot pamphlet and get it in the mail. So what my suggestion is to council is that you allow me to make sure that we have the publicity pamphlets in the mail and out two days prior to the ballots being mailed out. So it'll push back the date about five days.
And the reason why I brought that up is if we're talking about starting that budgetary process on March 9th, going back to what John Anderson had mentioned, we want to be able to communicate to the citizens what is going to be given up in the process if it doesn't move forward. So looking at the difference between March 9th to April 16th, that doesn't give us a lot of time to work, so I'd like us to look at starting that process earlier.
Mayor, Councilmember Walters, council. We're most likely, and I haven't had a lot of time to sit down with Mike on this because there's so many moving parts right now, but we're probably going to have to start this process in January at some point in time because there's so many things going on. And I hope as Mr. Minato had said, that by that time, we have resolved at least the annexation issue. That would help us quite a bit and then we know where to go from there. And if not, we just have a lot more work to do. So we'll be starting earlier.
And right now, you have to remember, Mike gave you a general idea and that was cutting all of your capital improvement projects, cutting out the $2 million for your contingencies and then cutting out what, 2.8 million from the general fund basically? So you kind of know what it's going to be like going into it. So we've got a lot of work to do.
I think the one thing that's very imperative is that the council as a whole sticks together as one and really goes out and helps the staff on this, this time. We've really got to, you know, we've started going forward, just don't stop. Let's go, let's continue on and do good things for this area and get it going. Any other discussion? Well, let me ask this to you, this a little bit. Anybody from the public have anything they want to bring up to our attention? Even though this is in the public hearing, I'll listen to you. Uh-oh. Come on up. Come on up.
My name's Fred Redman and I'm part of the area that wants to be annexed at Oasis at Magic Ranch. And the one thing I was thinking about here when I was listening to everything is I remember the old days when we used to have PERT charts for construction or whatever, where we had all these dates and we put all the different things that needed to be done. And the one thing I heard here was that we were talking about April, I think, is when the deadline would be to determine whether we in the annexed area can be part of the voting or not. And the thing that I also heard was that there has to be two open sessions, I think, to the public. If we wait till April to hear from the judge and whatever, then we won't get those public hearings at the Magic Ranch. So it almost looks to me like we need to put a deadline that says that if we don't have the annexation by a certain date, then we're not going to be able to get those public hearings or we're not going to then be part, is what I think I'm hearing.
The public hearings are going to actually happen on December 1st and 15th. The public hearings are what the town council calls for the town of Florence. And so when you, we feel like we've done our part to annex you in and it's in court right now. So when the judge makes that determination and says that your area is part of Florence, then all that needs to happen is anyone who's registered to vote, as long as that decision is made by that date in April that I read off that paper, that you would be allowed to vote because that's the law, so.
What I was worried about though, however, is if we don't hear from the judge by the 15th of December, then we will not be part of the public presentations unless you spend the time to do that anticipating that the we might be annexed. And I don't know, that's a lot of effort and time.
Fred, I think the thing there is, is the meeting on December the 1st and the December the 15th is a public hearing. Anybody from out there can come in and talk to us. It doesn't have to be just a citizen of Florence talking on it, but you all can come in on those dates. There won't be any other, there will be educational meetings going throughout after that to where we'll be going into the different areas. And I think that if we don't have the lawsuit filed that we should be putting on, we should include that area in our demonstration area or educational area, just on the possibility of the annexation coming through. The big thing again is to vote. When will you be able to vote? And that to me is the big issue and all of, even in the last election, that was a big issue.
I was just suggesting that there might be a different date involved for the people that aren't annexed yet as to when we have to get input from the judge before, you know, to be included in this, so.
As long as the judge makes his ruling prior to that April deadline, then you're fine. It's not, it's not, it's just, it's just whether or not the county has, the registration rolls for the election are open, then they can make those changes. If they're not open and the judge makes a decision after they're closed, then it'll be like it kind of was in the general election where people could not vote because the voter registration was already closed.
And the second part I was thinking about is with the effort of the council going around and talking to the individual people and whatever, it would, I don't know if I'd want to have all that extra effort going into an area that if we're not sure it's going to be annexed. Now, for me, I'd like to have it, obviously, because that's where I live and I want it. But I just don't know about the effort versus the town that's already, you know, ready versus the, we're still hanging out there waiting for the judge to say something and the effort of the council people going out and knocking on doors in my area, if you will, not knowing if they're going to be able to vote or not.
It's just a matter of information, you know, getting the information out to people. I appreciate your concern about our effort, but anything worth doing is worth overdoing if we can do it. And that's the way I look at it. It's, you got to do it. John?
Yeah, there's no reason why we can't have educational meetings all the way up to the day before the elections. So we could have educational meetings here and announce them to the annexed areas.
And you know, the other thing that you got to remember, as Jim said, we don't know when we're going to get our hearings or when we'll, you know, have a decision. But to me, we have to go out and even if the folks out there that have signed for the annexation, I know some of them didn't, they jumped me the other day, but that's another story. The thing about it is, is that we have to educate the people and tell them. But I think it's, that the people in the areas that we're annexing need to be aware of it too in case they do come in, but they can't vote. I think we just need to keep them informed as to what's going on.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Fred, thank you. Denise, I see you're just jumping, I saw that.
I'm not jumping, I wish I could.
All I'm going to say is, the board out in the gardens has asked Larry and I to be kind of an information thing to them about what goes on at council meetings. And I usually, I give them a written report and then if I feel there's something in what I've given them from a council meeting that should be made public, then I'll get up and talk about it at the board meeting. So I will continue to do that and put my two cents in out there as far as voting. I hope we can do this and I hope we can get it done efficiently. I know some of the people out there, I have no clue why, voted against the home rule. I really truly feel in my heart they were lied to about it and gullible enough to listen to lies. So we really do need to educate some of them. But I'll try my best out there with talking to them at board meetings.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Any other discussion on the work session material? Okay, I'll close the work session, back in regular, do we need a motion to go into, we don't need a motion to go back in regular meeting, do we? Okay. Let's go on to the manager's report. Charles?
Mayor, if my report is enclosed in your materials line, if there's anything you have a question on, staff's here.
Anybody got any questions, Charles?
Yes, I have one question. I have one question regarding the school and the adjacent property to Adamsville Road. What were they actually doing out there? If you could explain?
Are you talking the school property where they mowed down the trees?
That was on your report, correct?
No, my understanding, the school grounds there, they're expanding for additional field space is my understanding. However, in coordination with us, Mr. Costa's been working with them to grab additional rights of way to make sure that we can expand Adamsville World fully and repair it as well. So that's what's going on out there.
Okay. Any other call? This'll be the second call to the public. Anybody have anything they want to say? Hearing not called, closed call to the public, call to the council. Valerie?
I would like to express my thanks to the people. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, first, thank God and then thanks to everyone who voted for me to continue to work for the town of Florence. I appreciate all the support that I received.
Yep.
Yeah, I have, Florence Copper sent out a newsletter in the mail last week and there were several ladies that wrote letters to the editor on Florence Copper and they were expounding on what a great thing it would be for the community and there's no problem with worrying about our water. And I have a real problem with that. They have on here, there's different myths and truths about the copper project. One of them that says is a myth is that Florence Copper Mine will affect your drinking water. Well, there has not been an Insetu operation anywhere in the world that has not polluted the water. Every one of them. They have yet to show us one project that did not pollute the water. Another myth, the town of Florence and its taxpayers will be financially responsible for the cleanup of any environmental accidents by Florence Copper. Well, Florence Copper, I don't know exactly, I'd have to look it up, I didn't get it looked up, but says they've applied a multimillion dollar surety bond posted with the state and federal agencies that will be used for any cleanup if there is a problem with the site. Well, several million dollars isn't going to do it. I mean, that's been proven in the past on a lot of different projects around the United States to where the taxpayers do end up picking up the bill for the cleanup because the corporations, they just dissolve and then it goes to the taxpayers. Another one that says the aquifer protection permit allows Florence Copper to leave behind arsenic and other contaminant at concentrations exceeding the water standards. Nitrites were not given a permit limit. Well, there again, it's, they say that they'll be doing their own under the agreement the way they want it. When they're finished, they're wanting to just clean up or just take the ponds and cover them up. They're not wanting to haul away the residue and, and there will be more than just nitrates and that. There'll be more than arsenic, there'll be other heavy metals in there. And they also say that they'll go down below the water level, 400 feet into the bedrock. Well, that aquifer out there, it goes down and up. It's up and down all through there. It's not just one level above 400 feet. So it will be down in parts of the aquifer. Then it says Florence Copper uses cutting edge technology that's never been used before. Well, they go on to say that that's a myth, which is a myth because the recovery, Insetu copper recovery's been used around the globe for decades as they state. But, and they go on to state that they've consulted with the world's best and most experienced advisors to develop its project and to work closely with Florence Copper's Arizona-based staff. Well, that doesn't, doesn't ease my mind at all because as I've said before, they've yet to point out one Insetu mining project that has not polluted the water. And as important as water is in this day and age, coppers, I mean, California's running out of water, even Washington State is having water problems and they have a lot more water than we do. Nevada's running out, Colorado's running out. I mean, water is a lot more important than copper at this time, I would think. But I just wanted to state that, you know, some of the people that believe that there's no risk involved, I don't, I'd like them to show me where there is no risk because every one of them has polluted the water and I just wanted to bring that out. I'm tired of hearing people come up with these fallacies or whatever. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that out. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Tara?
I'd like to welcome our new additions to town council. Congratulations, looking forward to working with you. Also, in reference to the work session and the budget committee coming up, I feel that it would be beneficial to have a diverse on that board, either John Anderson or myself and Becky or Valerie. So this way both areas can come together and they see us working together in that way. I also understand John has a lot of experience with accounting, so as a current council member, I would have absolutely no problems with John fulfilling that role.
Ruben?
Yes, one thing I'd like to point out is that I've noticed around the Florence school sites that the street markings to include curbing and crosswalks are fading. So if it's possible, we could look to protect our children, get those redone.
Tommy? No? Tom?
Those wonderful people that just won that election. It's your job now. Not until two weeks. A couple of things I'd like to bring out, I'd like to send out congratulations for, to the Florence football and volleyball teams who made the state tournament this year even though we went out in the first round in each. They represented the town very well and their sportsmanship is shown really great. Also remind everybody, two weeks, Thanksgiving weekend, Florence Junior Parada, the oldest junior rodeo in the world. The parade will be on Saturday, 10 o'clock on Main Street. I hope we have everything settled but where the horses don't get spooked. I don't want anybody getting hurt on that. And I'll do my congratulations to you all for getting elected at the next meeting. But the one thing I want to follow up on Bill, on the Florence Copper or whatever their name is over there, I don't know who owns them. The final decision made by the ADEQ board was finalized Friday. We do not have a copy of that at this time. As soon as we get one, the manager will be putting it in our boxes. For somebody that attended the final hearing up there, Mr. Manato and I were there representing the town, Mr. Montoya was also there. The biggest thing I got out of it is the judge came out and said in the hearings, why didn't you show the BHP finals findings? And their answer was this, well, we only gave you what we thought was relevant. What we thought, the ones that had applied for the application. After the judge and the 34 days of hearing, and tell what it was, Jim, 34 days, I believe, and she heard all of this stuff and she came out with a ruling, that was their response up there to the board. Well, we only gave them at that time what we thought was relevant. So what they're telling people when they go out on their tours is what they think is relevant. They're not giving the whole picture, folks. The newspaper in Phoenix called me today on it, wanted to comment. I told them I thought we had done a good job, that we had won this round. I also told them to look into who actually owns the copper project out here. They were unaware that Curis is no longer the main entity. Curis is sold out. There was an article in the paper the other day where they approved a stock sale up in Canada. So who owns them? If you take a look at it, the Curis Copper and this new company that bought it, all the people involved with it are all Hunter Dickerson employees or associates. It's all Hunter Dickerson. We are the ones that would have to suffer if this thing goes through. Can they come up with what the board says? I don't know. It's going to be very expensive for them to do it. They've already invested a lot of money out here, but we cannot stop the fight. As Bill said, the water is more precious right now than gold in the western United And on behalf of the council and myself, I'd like to send out to the Austin family our condolences. Mike, who's a police officer of the town of Florence, had a son pass away last night. We send out our condolences to you.
Need a motion?
Second. Motion is second, adjourned, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries, we're adjourned.